All right, that might be a little cooler. My name is David Swatchey. I am the Senior Attorney and Executive Director of Community Environmental Defense Council. That sounds like a big thing. It's not. It's just two people. It's my wife and myself. Together we have fifty, over fifty years of legal experience. My, all of my experience until I started doing this, which was in 2009. Excuse me. I apologize to those of you on this side. I'm facing with my back, but I'm presenting to these folks, so I apologize. If anyone can hear me, just speak, just yell, and I'll speak more loudly. My entire career, until I did this, my entire legal career has been with very large firms in very large cities. I am exactly what I look like. I have been accused of, accused, shows my bias, but people have said I looked like Dick Cheney before he lost weight.
Google "Hobbit."
Yeah, I said accused. The, that's consistent with what I did as a lawyer with firms. Eighty-five percent of my career, eighty-five percent of my clients were very, very large financial institutions. Regional, national, and international insurance companies, financial institutions, commercial banks, investment banks, many institutions that were so-called too big to fail, including one that did, Lehman Brothers. That's the kind of stuff I did. I worked exclusively on very, very large transactions and typically very complex transactions, but always very large. The way they pick lawyers in that business is not how good you are at golf. Thanks for me, if I'm not. They don't do it based on personality once again, that helps me. You'll see, I don't have much of one, but I am a very, very, very good lawyer. What they look for in that business is people who are, I've never been diagnosed, but I think I'm borderline OCD. If you don't know what that means, it's obsessive-compulsive disorder. I focus forever and ever and ever to make sure things are right. The business I was in, it was critical to know when to use a comma as opposed to a semicolon or whether to use a comma at all. I never made any such mistakes, but just to give you an example, the kind of work that I used to do, if somebody made a mistake with a comma as opposed to a semicolon, and it cost somebody to offer not mine six million dollars. So, I'm a very, very, very careful lawyer. I know the gentleman who was here last night used the word misleading sometimes. I have never, except by him, been accused of misleading about the law. I am phenomenally fastidious about the law. What I say to you about the law, you can take to the bank, and I'll put it in right. If I don't know, I'll tell you. Okay? That's my background, and we'll go from there. What I'd like to talk about, using local land use authority to protect health, safety, and community assets in the face of industrial-scale gas drilling, specifically unconventional gas drilling. So, very briefly, I'm going to talk about your land use authority, the legal authority, power, and right that the village has in a vacuum to address high-impact uses such as unconventional gas drilling. I'm going to talk about what the powers of local government are in a vacuum. Going to talk what our recommendation is, which is, if you're undecided, if the village is undecided to enact a moratorium, I'm going to tell you what a moratorium is, even though I know you've enacted one in the past. Going to talk a little bit, we're not working in a vacuum. There's something called the gas mining statute. By the way, I should have said, if anybody, you folks or anybody in the audience would like a copy of this presentation, please just give me your email address before you leave, and I'll send you a copy of this. I do that every time that I do a presentation like this. What I do, I put in writing, and we back up. So, you're more than welcome to that. You also don't need to have PowerPoint to get this. We send it as a PDF, so if you want it, but you don't have PowerPoint, don't worry about it. So, we're not in a vacuum. There's something called the gas mining statute. We're going to talk about that. We're going to talk about whether or not that preempts or takes away your local control. Going to talk about, then we're going to talk about common arguments that are typically made, and again, I apologize if you folks on this side want to stand someplace. Going to talk about typical arguments that are often made against why a municipality should not enact protective laws such as a moratorium. Going to talk about the myth of the taking threat. I'm very, very careful about language, and I'm calling it a myth, and we'll see why. Going to talk about the status of two cases that are not on appeal, despite what you were told last night, the Dryden and Middlefield cases. Going to talk, then we're going to talk about risks of waiting to enact protective laws, what we see. Going to talk briefly about Mr. Wedlake's theories. If we have time, and I'm not, I've got all the time in the world, but if you folks have time, I'd like to just go about three, four slides about compulsory integration. Many people feel that's important. And then I just add, again, if we have time, it's just one slide about road protection schemes. Okay? All right. Very, very briefly, what powers, the first thing is what powers do local governments have in New York, specifically Board of Trustees' powers. I know I've talked to the planning board, but I understand this in the context of whether you might make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. By the way, everybody understands that in the federal system, at the federal level, the United States Supreme Court is the highest court in the land. When they say something, they're the final arbiter. They're the last word. In New York State, the Supreme Court is not the highest court in the land. In New York State, the Supreme Court is the first level. It's a triad court. The highest court in New York State is called the Court of Appeals. So, we recommend, whether or not you're talking about gas drilling or moratoriums or anything like that, we recommend, if you're dealing with matters of New York State law, that your ears prick up when a lawyer tells you about that it's a Court of Appeals case, because that's, that's the analog to the, in New York State, to the U.S. Supreme Court. Every single case that I show you tonight, unless I tell you whether it was, it might be one, it's not. Every case I show you tonight is a Court of Appeals case. In other words, every single case is the highest court, announced by the highest court in New York State, including this one. So, the first question I typically get is, you know, what are our powers, and I'm still talking about in a vacuum, you know, to basically anticipate, we've heard things about this use that's on the horizon, unconventional gas drilling. What are our powers at the local government level? And what if we guess wrong? Well, the Court of Appeals has said unequivocally, again, these are all Court of Appeals cases unless I tell you otherwise, it's a local legislature's right. When they say legislature, they mean a town board, village Board of Trustees, or common council in the context of the city. But it's your right in matters of zoning and planning, they would actually say, did say, obligation, but it's your right to anticipate future problems and to enact measures to guard against them, even if those anticipated events never come to pass. So, the law does not require you to be clairvoyant about these anticipated events. You don't have to have a crystal ball, as long as you're asking, acting with faith, if you anticipate the problem and enact some kind of protective law against it, you know, you don't have to be perfect on that. The law is crystal clear. No lawyer will ever tell you otherwise. I will tell you as I go through here, we are lawyers disagreeing. This is just basic black letter law. Now, it turns out that you've got two sources of authority. A municipality has two sources of authority to enact protective laws. The first is actually the statutory law, the village law, New York State village law. And it turns out that the village law is actually perfectly tuned, perfectly aligned as far as what it allows you to do with the impacts that many people are worried about in the context of unconventional gas drilling. Because what this law lets you do, it gives you, gives you the purpose of using your zoning power to precisely lessen traffic congestion, secure safety, promote health and welfare, provide adequate light, prevent overcrowding, and facilitate adequate services. So, it's almost a perfect alignment with a lot of the impacts some of the people are worried about. That's as a matter of statutory law, as a matter of case law, which judge decision, you may use that zoning power specifically, these are all Court of Appeals cases again, to prevent uses for which the physical and financial resources of the village are inadequate. So, most places that I talk to, the biggest line item in the budget is typically, it might not be in a village, but in towns and cities, it's almost always the highway department. It might be here in the village too, I don't know. But unless you've got an excess of things like that, of money for, for road repair and things like that, and first responders, that your zoning authority is perfectly tuned, attuned to the risks and impacts that most people, the people who are worried about are typically seen with this industry. Now, that's your zoning authority. That's not the only source of authority. You've also got home rule authority. Depending on how closely you follow the, this whole fracking debate, you may have heard, there's something called the Seward Amendment, and somebody in the Assembly or the State Senate is, wants to pass some kind of law to give you home rule authority or confirm your home rule authority. It's nonsense. You don't need it. People call us, they want us to endorse it. We say, no, you don't need it. When they talk about home rule that way, it's a concept, there is actually a statute called home rule. You've got it today. You don't need Seward to pass anything. It's an existing New York statute. And it allows you to use your police power authority. Let me back up for a minute. Police power authority, it sounds like basically people hitting people with billy clubs in Chicago in 1968. That's not what police power is. Police power is a good thing. It is, it is the inherent authority that every village, town, city, county, state, and federal government has to enact laws to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the village and to protect the property in the village. You've got that. It's, it exists by virtue of statute here, and as you can see, once again, there's an almost perfect alignment as far as what this police power authority empowers you to do and the impacts that many people are concerned about. You can use it to protect and enhance, for the protection and enhancement of your physical and visual environment, and as I said, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the village and the property in the village. And again, I'll have copies, so I can send copies of this to people, so you don't have to. Now, before I get into more detail, our recommendation is that municipalities which are not certain whether fracking has presently practiced, whether it's, as presently practiced is appropriate for their community, let me back up. And the reason I say as presently practiced is, these guys are getting better all the time. They're not good now as far as we're concerned, or I wouldn't be doing this. We don't think they've proven it safe. But the fracking process today is a lot better than it was six months ago, and it's going to be a lot better in six months, and it's going to be a lot better in a year. So, what I'm talking about is just whether fracking, as presently practiced, as practiced today, okay? We believe that municipalities which are not certain whether fracking, as presently practiced, is appropriate for their community, either because your residents themselves are divided, or between, because members of the village board are undecided, we believe that the appropriate thing to do, the fiscally, the financially prudent thing to do for a municipality, is to preserve its options by considering the enactment of a specific but very common type of land use law called a moratorium, which I'll go through. And in the event that you think that that makes sense, we strongly recommend that you enact it before the DEC begins issuing drilling permits. And I'll explain why we think that's important. Moratoria is the plural of moratorium. I mention this because sometime, I don't use it. I say moratoriums. That's incorrect. But sometimes people sort of quote me after these presentations, and I just want to be on record that the plural of moratorium, even though I don't use it correctly, is moratoria. Now, a moratorium is identical in form to inform as opposed to substance in any other law that you have ever seen, a local law, whether it's an animal control law, whether it's about your village roads, whatever it is. It's identical in form except for one thing. It's got a, an expiration date, a burn-off, some people call it a sunset clause. Otherwise, it looks like any other law that you've ever done, okay? I'll show you in a moment. Before I show you what that law looks like, this is a very important point. It's both a legal point and it's a political point. Consideration by the Village Board of Trustees as to whether a moratorium should be enacted or subsequently a decision to enact a moratorium does not mean, as a matter of law, it does not mean that the board members have made up their minds about whether gas drilling is an appropriate land use in the village. The only thing it means is that those board members believe it's in the best interest of the village as a whole to study and gather more information during the moratorium period to help them make an informed decision. So, it's really, really critically important to understand, in this party, even though I'm focused on you folks, which is also for the people in the audience, a decision to consider a moratorium or a decision to enact a moratorium does not mean, as a matter of law, that the board members have made up their minds. It's basically a timeout period, as I'll explain in a minute. This is not a Court of Appeals case. This is a mid-level appeals court case, so it's above the Supreme Court. It's the next one up, but it's not the highest one. But it's good law. This explains that a moratorium is simply a special kind of law that may be adopted as, as an interim measure reasonably designed to halt development while the town, village, city, municipality considers interalia, that just means among other things, comprehensive land use changes. There is no bright-line test for duration. There's all kinds of urban legends out there about how long a moratorium can be, whether a moratorium can be extended. The, what the law says is that the, you can't, and by the way, you can extend it many, many times if you need to, but the, what the law says is the duration of the moratorium has to be, quote, reasonable, okay? And if you extend it, you also had, still has to be reasonable in the aggregate. Let's say that you decided to do a one-year moratorium. You look and see, depending on what you're doing with that moratorium, you look and see whether one year is reasonable. If you then get into it, you're ten months into it, you want to talk about extending it for four, for four more months or six more months, call it six months because that's easier math for me, then you look at it and say, it's eighteen months. You just aggregate it each time you have, okay? All right. As far as what does a moratorium look like, I know that the village has had one, but I want to show you in the past, I think. But here's what ours typically looks like, the, the first part of it. And it's pretty simple. It just says, from and after the date hereof, no application for a permit or special permit, site plan approval, subdivision approval, et cetera, shall be processed or approved for the construction establishment or use of whatever it is that we're talking about that is the subject of our moratorium. And I'll, I'll get to that in a moment. As far as the expiration date, the burn-off date, different lawyers do it differently. This is how we do every one of them. By the way, I didn't go into this. We have worked directly or indirectly with over a hundred municipalities across the state, from the very largest cities in upstate to the smallest towns and villages, which leaves the small towns are smaller than the villages. We have personally done over a hundred of these laws and been there at each step of the process, when people decide they're going to do it, the hearings, the public information sessions, the public hearings, and so forth, which I'll get into. There are probably 125 or 145 such laws in the pipeline as we speak, besides the hundred some that are on various lists people have done. We have a hand in, a chunk of those, another 20 of those, and then there's another probably two handfuls that the client doesn't know we did, but that we did because the lawyer for the, oh, by the way, is the lawyer for the village here, do I not find his hands? Okay. But the client doesn't even know sometimes, but the municipal lawyer calls us up and we send it to him or to her. And then there's another big handful that are also ours, that people have just copied from other, other municipalities. And that's fine too. That happens in the law. It's not a problem. But here's what ours look like, the burn-off date. This moratorium shall begin on the date hereof, and shall burn off on the first to occur of, this happened to be the one year, or, look at lowercase double I in the whole, the effective date of a duly enacted repeal of this local law. This is a really important point. You don't have to put this in here. Anything, any law that your village Board of Trustees passes, it can always be repealed, no matter what it says. You can do a law that says this is an unrepealable law, and it's still repealing, okay? That's the law. So, you don't need to put this in here, but we put it in every single one of these because we want to remind the people who are passing the law that the control stays with them. So, if it, if it turns out, you do decide to go with a moratorium, say one year, and it turns out, what my wife calls fairy dust, fairy dust is developed. And what she means by fairy dust is you just sprinkle it on the, on the ground, and there's no environmental impacts, and magically energy comes up through the, through the, to ground. If that happens in six months, or as I mentioned before, these guys get better all the time, if they get really good in six months, or four months, or seven months, or whatever it is, you just pull the plug on this. Now, I also want to say, there's no such, because of this, there's no such thing as a permanent law. I don't know if we're going to talk, get to this tonight about what happens after people do a moratorium. That might be a separate presentation. But people sometimes call that a permanent law after the, after the moratorium. It's correct to call it that, but remember, there is no such thing as an unrepealable law. So, whether it's a moratorium that, that on its face is temporary, is of limited duration, or a law that doesn't have that kind of clause, you can always repeal it, no matter what it says. It is not possible to pass a law that's not repealing, okay? No matter what you put in the law. Now, remember I talked about, we said, okay, I showed you the first part, and it said, here's what ours looks like. No permits will be issued, you know, no site plan, no subdivision, et cetera, for whatever it is that we're covering with a moratorium. When we work with a municipality, and we would be honored to work with yours if you so wish, the municipality is the client. We're not the client. The public's not the client, not the people who invited us here is the client. The municipality is the client. What we do with the moratorium in the first instance is, we come out with a draft, and our draft, which is always subject to change, it's always subject to change by the municipal board who has authority, whether it's the planning board, whether it is the village Board of Trustees, whomever it is, whether it's the village county, or whether it's the lawyer for the village. Those things are always tweaked on a local, local, municipal level. But what we come out in, of the shoot with is we cover three categories initially in our moratoriums. They are defined terms, and what a lawyer means by defined terms is that to really understand what that, whether it's a law, it's a contract, whatever it is, if it's a defined term, to really understand what everybody's talking about, you have to read that definition, all right? Our defined terms, the three categories of activities that we cover out of the chute are nat gas exploration activities, extraction activities, and support activities. When you look at the definitions, it turns out that the definitions of exploration activities and extraction activities are very intuitive. In other words, the definitions mean exactly what you would guess, almost exactly what you would guess they mean. Exploration activities is basically poking holes in the ground, looking for, if you look at the definition, looking for subsurface hydrocarbons. And extraction, and again, these both involve poking holes in the ground, is poking holes in the ground and pulling subsurface hydrocarbons out, okay? So, when you parse through the definitions, that's what those are. Support activities as a definition is not intuitive. I've had people say to me, my son's business is he runs a lunch truck where, with a, it's aluminum truck, and he goes to construction sites or well pads or whatever it is, and at dinnertime sells sandwiches to, to, to the people, construction workers or well workers or whatever. That sounds like a support activity to me. You're putting my son out of business. Yeah, that sounds like a support activity, but that's not what our, a support activity is as covered by this, remember, it's a defined term. You have to look at the definitions, which I'm going to show you in a moment, and in fact, there are only seven very narrowly defined activities, but which most cities, towns, and villages, especially villages, find particularly important, which I'll explain why in a moment. So, our definition of support activities, before I can show you what that, what those are, is tied to our, another definition, and that is also a defined term, and it's called nat gas extraction, exploration, or production of wastes. And this is probably the single most important definition in our moratorium, in our form of moratorium. I'm not going to take you through the whole thing. It's about a page and a half. And by the way, I've been practicing law at a very high level for 31 years. I understand what clients like and what they don't like. I know clients like simple. I know clients like short, okay? I know clients don't like a page and a half definition. I get it, but bear, bear with me, and I'll explain why we have to do it here. Here's our definition of nat gas extraction, exploration, and production waste, the first part. Any of the following in any form, whether or not these items have been accepted or exempted from cover, the coverage of any federal or state environmental protection laws, or have been accepted through statutory or regulatory definitions of industrial waste, and then depending on the law, hazardous waste, hazardous materials, hazardous substances, and so forth. This is a very unusual definition, and let me tell you why we have to use this. The primary federal environmental protection laws, basically all of the important ones, Clean Air Act, the Clean, well, people have heard about the Haliburton loophole, that's just one thing in 2005. I'm talking about the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, CERCLA, which most people know as the superfund law, RETRO, which most people don't know what it is, but it's a super, it's a, it's CERCLA on steroids, and so forth. All follow the same three-part format, A, B, and C. And lawyers call them listing statutes, because Section 8 lists, or articulates, or specifies the various compounds that the law is concerned about. So, they all start out the same way in Section 8, and they start out, and they list them, xylane, benzene, toluene, and they go down. Some of them are 10, some of them are, you know, 25 or 50. They get to the end of this list, they all file the same format. They get to the end of the list, and they say, each of the foregoing is herein referred to as, and any two or more are herein collectively referred to as, and then depending on the law, it'll say hazardous waste, hazardous materials, hazardous substances, and so forth. That's Section 8, and all of those follow the same format. Section B, I'm going to skip and come back to. Section C says of all of these laws, any person who handles, transports, disposes, utilizes, employs, any verb you can think of. And person, by the way, is described very expansively. It's natural persons, and it's corporations and LLCs and everything else. So, any person who, insert verb, handles, transports, et cetera, anything up in Section 8, is hereby made subject to the requirements of this law. And then Section C goes on for, in every one of those cases, hundreds of pages, and if you include the regulations, thousands of pages about what happens if you're dealing with, say, xylane, or toluene, or benzene. Section B, which I omitted, and I'm coming right back to, is no more than one or two sections in each of these federal laws. And what it says is, notwithstanding any provision of this law to the contrary, in the event that the person who is handling, transporting, utilizing, whatever it is, any of the things up there in Section 8, in the event that that person is involved with under contract to, employed by, et cetera, the oil and gas industry, then, and in such event, then those items in Section 8 are not hazardous waste, hazardous materials, hazardous substances, and so forth. Everybody follow that? So, what that means is if anybody else in this country, anybody in the entire country picked the nastiest, whatever you think the nastiest industry is in this country, if anybody else is using xylane, it's, depending on the law we're talking about, it's a toxic substance, or it's a hazardous waste, or it's a hazardous material. But if it's being used by somebody who's in or employed by or under contract to the oil and gas industry, just that one industry, then it's not hazardous or toxic, et cetera. So, this takes me back to even though I know what clients like, which is simple and short, if you say, we don't need this guy, and you say to your village lawyer, just do us a short short and simple law. Do us one sentence that says thou shall not use hazardous materials, or hazardous substances, or toxic waste, or whatever it is, in our village, you've got a big problem on your hands. Because when your village code enforcement officer gives to give somebody an appearance ticket, or whatever you call it here, they're going to say, uh-uh, not me. When I use it, it's not hazardous. When I use it, it's not toxic. So that's why we have to go through the definition of waste. Now, all of our definition of our support activities are only seven, but they're very narrowly defined. They're all tied to that waste, the definition that I gave you. I won't bore you with what each one of these is. Some of them are intuitive, the compression facility is a compressor station. Some of them are not intuitive. A land, let me tell you what a land application facility is. In Pennsylvania, in Marcellus, not in every shale formation, but the Marcellus Formation is radioactive. It is inherently radioactive. Anybody who tells you otherwise doesn't understand basic organic chemistry. They might argue with how radioactive it is, but if they tell you it ain't radioactive, they're wrong. And there are some people who will tell you it's not. So in Pennsylvania, before we get into chemicals, before we get into fluids, before we get into water, just poking holes in the earth to start a well, what comes back up is called a drill core. The drill cores in Pennsylvania, even though they come from Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania does not, as a matter of law, Pennsylvania will not let the drillers dispose of that dirt, that earth, from the well drilling in Pennsylvania. Because A, it's mar, because A, it's radioactive, and B, there's all kinds of other nasty stuff down 3,000, 5,000 feet under the earth. So Pennsylvania, which lets these guys do pretty much anything they want, will not even let them dispose of that, that earth in Pennsylvania. Okay? So what happens with it is they, what they're doing with it now is, at least in northern Pennsylvania, is they're taking it across the border and they're disposing of it in New York State. Now, there are several landfills, there are several landfills in New York State that are taken, county landfills, but there's nowhere near the number of landfills to take care of all the stuff that's coming up. So they're going to farmers with it. And they're coming up with big dump trucks and they're saying to the farmers, we have dirt here, that's how they describe it, or we have earth, and we would like you to take it and spread it on your, on your land, and we'll give you X dollars per dump truck load for it. And the farmers say, well, okay, that sounds pretty good. Is it, is it safe? And the people say to them, it's not hazardous. And I told you how they can say that. So when you look at the definition of land application facilities, they're very narrowly defined. It basically says, people can't, that it's again, if you do this, it'll be against the law to dump this stuff on dirt in your village. Can it stop people from dumping? No, it can't. Because people are still going to dump, they dump illegally all the time. There was a big story in the paper a few days ago. But at least it will be against the law, so you can do something about it. Now, that's basically solid waste disposal. This industry's biggest cost is essentially its waste stream. And besides the solid waste, there is a liquid waste stream. It is, it is two components. It is either flowback fluid, or, I'm blanking now. But basically, the, what they, I really, yeah, I've been doing too many, but essentially, what they bring back up is, you know, it's the drilling waste, but in fluid form. What they used to do with this in Pennsylvania is simply dump it in the river. And Pittsburgh basically said, you can't do that anymore. Pittsburgh sued, and only after Pittsburgh sued did they stopped at the DEP, which is the Pennsylvania analog to our DDC, did the DEP say, you can't put it in the river anymore. So then what they decided to do is put it in sewage treatment plants. Keep in mind, this is Pennsylvania we're talking about, which lets these guys do almost anything they want. Pennsylvania said, without being sued, Pennsylvania said, no, you can't put that stuff in sewage treatment plants. That's not what they're designed for. It doesn't take the stuff out that it's supposed to. It leaves bad things in and go downstream. So what they do mostly now is they, they truck it all to Ohio, and they dump it underground. And that's what the underground injection is. Now, in Ohio, some people will tell you that there's a, there's a question about whether or not this causes earthquakes. Depending on the state you're talking to, there may be a question. Ohio, there is no questions. They have said unequivocally, not that we're still studying, their studies have done, and Ohio said, yeah, it causes earthquakes. But they're taking it anyway. They want it done. So if you go through the definition of underground injection, it basically says you can't put this in old, because they look for old wells to put this in. It says that you can't put it into, in our village, you can't put it into our wells. So that's what that is. And these are the sort of things that many, it, I understand that there may be some leases in the village. Tip, you folks have more leases in the village than usually. Usually, the towns have more leases, and the villages have fewer. But these are precisely the things that most villages worry about. Because even if the property isn't leased, these are the sort of things that people want to do things with. They want to have the waste dumped through the storage facilities. And again, if you parse through those definitions, you'll see what they, these are all basically, you know, disposed, except for these two, these are disposal of constituent waste from the drilling process. Underground natural gas storage is what it sounds like. Okay? All right. So what I tried to do earlier is show you that in a vacuum, there is no question, no question, no lawyer will tell you otherwise, in a vacuum, that you've got the right power and authority to pass a protective law in the village to deal with this kind of use. We're not dealing in a vacuum. There is something called the gas mining statute. It's, there's going to be a site, you don't need to look this down if you get it, but it's ECL 23 hyphen 0303 subsection 2. And there are some people, a lot of non-lawyers who favor drilling, but very, very, very few lawyers, who will tell you, less than five, as I'll get into, including law firms, who will tell you that this gas mining statute, which I'm going to show you, preempts or takes away your authority to pass these laws. Let me show you what it says. Basically, it says that despite everything I told you about village law and home law, you, like any other local municipality, don't have the legal authority to pass laws relating to the regulation, relating to the regulation of the oil, gas, and solution mining industries. You know what oil and gas are? Solution mining is salt mining. So the question is, what, so we know we don't have, you don't have the authority to pass laws relating to the regulation of the gas industry. So what does that mean? Well, remember I told you the Court of Appeals is the highest court in the state? The Court of Appeals has not had the opportunity, I used to say yet, but I won't, I don't say that any longer, and I'll explain why in a moment. The Court of Appeals has not had an opportunity to construe the words relating to the regulation of, in the context of the gas mining statute. But it has had an opportunity, multiple, numerous opportunities, to construe virtually identical language in a slightly different context, in a slightly different context of mineral mining. Mineral mining is basically sand and gravel mining. In our state, sand and gravel mining and topsoil are dealt with in a different statutory scheme than gas mining. So in the context of the sand and gravel mining, with this virtually identical language, what the Court of Appeals has said, unequivocally, repeatedly, and unanimously. Those are three things that most lawyers pay a lot of attention to. Unequivocally, repeatedly, and unanimously. Unequivocally, repeatedly, and unanimously. But the legal effect of that language is that while a village may not regulate the operations and processes of the industry which is a site of the language, that the village may prohibit that industry altogether using land use laws of general applicability. Now, I'm not here tonight to talk about prohibiting the industry altogether on a permanent basis. That's a so-called permanent law. I'm just here to talk about a moratorium. But if you can do it permanently, you, I promise you, you can do it short-term in a moratorium. Now, what they mean by regulate the operations and processes are things such as how far down they can drill. So for example, you might say, I don't like the radioactive nature of the Marcellus shale. So in my town, you can do the Utica Shale, but not Marcellus. You can't do that. Towns have tried to tell them how far down they can deep, into what, into what formation. Towns have tried to say, you got to stay above the water table, you got to go below the water table. You can't do that. Those are operations and processes. Operations and processes, there's things like setbacks. The setbacks in the present S guise for homes and schools are 150, and are 100 and 150 feet from the wellhead. Okay? 100 and 150 feet. In Texas, it's 2,000 feet. Texas has a little more experience than New York. The present S guise, when people tell you the D C will protect us, 100 and 150 feet from the schools and from the house. So you might say, I trust the D C, but, and everything's good with the D C, but I don't like the setbacks. I want 1,000-foot setbacks or 2,000. You can't do that. Those are operations and processes. People get mad at me for saying that. I didn't make the law. Those are operations and processes. Casing, bonding, rather, both in the sense of insurance. People have tried to say, I don't like, because the D C's, I like $25,000 of bond is like insurance policy. They said, we, you know, you can do it, but we want 150,000, or a million, whatever, instead of 25,000. The court has said, no, that's operations and processes. Bonding in the sense of well casings. You might say, the D C wants three layers of well casing, we want four. You can't do that. Those are operations and processes. Every lawyer agrees, you can't do that. Okay? Now, so, we're still figuring out relating to the regulation, and what does this mean on this preemption question? Mainstream legal opinion, and I'll explain in a minute what I mean by that, is that there is no reason, not no good reason, no reason period, why that relating to the regulation of language in the gas mining statute, which should be interpreted any differently than the virtually identical language, I used to say when, but now if this reaches the Court of Appeals. I do a lot of these presentations. I would say seven out of 10 of them are filmed by people who I will describe as being on the other side, by that I mean pro-drilling. I offer, as I did tonight, to everybody my presentation, which always includes this. I explain, as I'm about to explain, that there are maybe five, a total of five, including five lawyers, including Mr. Wedlake, who was here last night, and I include as one is all the lawyers at his firm. But there are maybe five lawyers total in the state who will, at this point, who believe you are preemptive, or that your authority is taken away. I do not know a single neutral lawyer, a single New York neutral lawyer, who tells, who believes that your authority has been preempted or taken away. I say this every night that I do this, and I say, the first time somebody from the back says to me, interrupts now, or waits till Q and A, and says, that's not true, Sally Smith is a neutral lawyer, and she doesn't agree, and Bill Smith is a neutral lawyer, and he doesn't agree. The first time that happens, I'll make sure there's really a Sally Smith. I'll make sure that she really disagrees, and I'll stop saying. But there's not one. And what I mean by neutral, this wasn't true two years ago, by the way. But that's where everybody is, except for five people and five law firms. And I'll tell you why those five firms are where they are later on in the presentation. So, on this issue of are you preempted, every, don't, I'm not a neutral lawyer. I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing, the way I'm doing, if I were a neutral lawyer. Mr. Wedlake is not, is not a neutral lawyer, as I will explain later this evening. I wish your counsel here, the village counsel is here, but get a neutral lawyer, and what I mean is a lawyer who doesn't have a dog in the hunt. The lawyers at Columbia Law School agree with me, the teachers, fourth best, according to U S News, the fourth best law school in the country. Don't offend anybody if they went somewhere else. The lawyers, the professors at Cornell, where I live, depending on who you talk to, either the ninth or the 11th best law school, okay? Those are neutral lawyers. They don't have a dog in the hunt. Okay? Despite what you heard last night. Now, so what I've tried to do is go through, in a vacuum, what your legal authority is. I've tried to describe what a moratorium it is, and what, if you decide to go forward, what we think it should look like, at least in the first draft that your municipal lawyer takes a crack at. I've explained, we're not in a vacuum, but there are, you know, there are a lot of non-lawyers who think you're preempted, but less than a handful of lawyers who think you're preempted. Now, I want to talk about the typical arguments that citizens will often make as opposed to, but they, their legal arguments, but that citizens, rather than their lawyers, will typically make about why you shouldn't pass this kind of protective law. The first thing they'll tell you, I'll try to pick up the pace. The first thing they'll tell you is that it's un-American to tell people what to do with their property. That sounds like a compelling argument, but it's just wrong. The law in New York State, since before New York State, was a statement, was and is, that ownership of private property entails an affirmative obligation, that you not use your property in a manner that can hurt your neighbor downstream or downwind. That's been the law since before we were state, and it's the law now. Property rights, some people don't like to hear that, but property rights are always subject to limitations to prevent injury to rights of community and neighbors. These are all Court of Appeals cases I'm going to give you. The next thing people will tell you, they'll use an appraiser's term, and they'll say that if you, if you do a moratorium, or the next step after that, if you go that way, that you're depriving me of what the appraisers call the highest and best use of my property. That may be true, but it doesn't matter. The court has looked at that, Court of Appeals, unanimous decision. That's not an effective argument. That frequently is the effect of police power-based regulation. Look at the language in blue. The general welfare of the public is superior in importance to the financial profits of the individual. The general welfare of the public is superior in importance to the financial profits of the individual. Then the next thing people like to say is, look, that's all well and good, but here's a case from Pennsylvania, here's a case from West Virginia, you have to let us drill someplace. Now, in Pennsylvania and West Virginia, the highest courts are called the Supreme Court. And they will show you Supreme Court of Pennsylvania cases and Supreme Court of West Virginia cases that say, yeah, it's kind of like the proverbial dirty books form, but for different reasons. That's First Amendment stuff. But in those states, yeah, you have to let them drill somewhere in every town. But the law in Pennsylvania and the law in West Virginia doesn't have anything to do with the price of tea in China when it comes to the law in New York. That is not the law in New York. Pennsylvania, and especially West Virginia, have a long history of resource extraction, and their judicial code basically reflects that. That's not the case in New York. In New York, prevention of damage to others and community legally trumps the right to exploit natural resources. The village is not obliged to permit the exploitation of any and all natural resources within the town, within the village, as a permitted land use. Yet limiting that use is a reasonable exercise of its police power, it is, unless you look at the, look at the language in blue, to prevent damage to the rights of others and to promote the interests of the community as a whole. This is really, really serious, what this case says. Okay? This is a, this is a unanimous Court of Appeals of New York decision. All right? Now, what you see in blue here is that the law in New York is that, that the idea is to prevent damage to the rights of the other. The interests of the community in New York State always trump or preempt individual rights where there's any kind of danger. Not the case in Pennsylvania, not the case in West Virginia. Because of this case, this is how we will, in large part because of this case, this is why we were so able, I'll show, I'll discuss in a moment, so confidently to predict that both Driven and Middlefield, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, would win those cases. All right? And I'm only just going to show you what Mr. Wedlake said about that. All right? Now, the other thing like, people like to say is... Now, the other thing like, people like to say is that if you do a protective law, like a moratorium, that they send the message that our town, or village, or city is closed for business. Nothing could be further from the truth. And let me tell you why. The jobs that this industry brings are for the great part temporary. They're very, these are not people who wear ties and coats, but they're very highly skilled jobs, extremely highly skilled jobs. So you can't, it doesn't make sense financially, because of all the training required, to come to this town and train somebody, and go to that town and train somebody. So they basically take these highly skilled people from, you know, wherever it is, Colorado or Oklahoma or Texas or whatever, and they bring them with them. All right? Those jobs do not go to locals. The businesses, and they'll, they bring a lot of these people. The business is that those non-locals support during the temporary period that they're around, are restaurants and bars and lodging facilities and so forth. Okay? What you need to know about the drilling game is that it's based upon level, upon level, upon level, upon level of independent contractors. When you think that Chesapeake is drilling a well, Chesapeake is not drilling a well. When you see up here, it says Apache 17, or Chesapeake 3 LLC. That is a single-purpose entity, generally thinly capitalized. That's why it's number 17 and number 3, because there's a 16 and a 46 and so forth. Some of them just do one well, some of them do two or three. They are not the drillers. They get somebody else. I almost said hire, but that would have been imprecise. They engage somebody else to basically do the drilling. And that other person engages somebody else to do every single thing. Every level down here is a different, is a different entity. Now, the definite, and they all are what's called independent contractors. Now, they do this for two reasons. They do it basically because if they're truly, if they're independent contractors, they don't have to pay payroll taxes, work as comp insurance, and things like that. But they also do it to insulate themselves from liability. Because that way, just as you saw in the Gulf, you know, when, when the Gulf blew up and everybody was pointing fingers, and everyone said, "Oh, it's not mine, it's yours."